City Council John Barkchow with the Hutchinson Utility Awards for April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We'll call a meeting to order.
I don't know, does Anthony mean it's probably the same thing?
He should too, yeah.
Utilities, so.
Hereby called a joint meeting to order from the Hutch Utilities.
Great introductions. Mayor, Mayor Forcer.
Hutchinson Utilities Commissioner Anthony Hanson.
City Administrator Matt Hennick.
Hutchinson Utilities Commissioner Matt Jay.
H U C Don Martinez.
General Manager for Hutchinson Utilities Jeremy Carter.
H U C Kathy Silverdale.
Hutchinson City Council Pat May.
City Council Dave Silvestre.
Hutchinson City Council Tim Burley.
City Council Chad Smolski.
H U C Bob Landauer.
Shall we grab the staff room?
Yeah, we can introduce the staff that's here. Mike, where are you yourself?
Mike Sifter from the first track.
Dave Lobster, Hutch Utilities Electric.
Mike Geros, Hutch Utilities Production Manager.
Jared Martik, Financial Manager, Hutch Utilities.
Tom.
Tom Foss, I T for H U C and the city.
Mark Sabora, Attorney for Alls.
Also, just maybe introduction for, we have us, looking back, I think we've done this meeting since seventeen or eighteen.
Yeah, at least.
And so usually we try to get together about once a year, both the City Council and Hutch Utilities Board, just to kind of share what's going on. And so it's been probably four or five years since we did that. Thought that would be a good time to do that again. And so here we are today. That's the, basically the purpose of this meeting, mainly, I think, for kind of Hutch Utilities to share a little bit about what's going on, especially for the City Council. I think maybe most of council members, whether you know this or not, basically your authority is to appoint this board, and then I think he has veto rights for rate increases, and that's essentially the responsibility of the City Council when it comes to Hutch Utilities. But they are kind of a component of the city, and so it's always good just to kind of get an update from time to time on the things that they're working on, and the things that they're, they're dealing with. Now Jeremy and I talked a little bit this morning, and I thought I'd just kind of start sharing a little bit about kind of what's going on at the city, mainly from a project standpoint, and I'll touch on staffing a little bit. I know I attend your guys' meetings and kind of share that from time to time, but it's always good just to get an update. From a staffing standpoint, we do have a couple new directors in the past, actually within the past year. Mike introduced himself, he's our new Public Works Director. Kelly Winland, we hired as a new H R Director after you guys, Brenda worked with you guys after she retired. And right now, we've got two long-term employees in our Parks Department that have been replaced. But for the most part, from a staffing standpoint, it's been pretty steady here at the city. I think our turnover rate's under ten percent, and that's stayed pretty consistent over past several years. Some of the big projects, I think you're all familiar with, the police station, and really, we're probably about ninety-eight percent done with everything. It's those last two percent items that you're kind of waiting for the punch list items to get completed. I was talking to Tom today, and we could open that in the middle of May, or the end of May, just kind of depends on when everything kind of comes in and be able to finish everything off. Some of the other things that are, that we're currently working on, we have a growth planning study and a housing study that should be released in the next month or two. The housing study, we're actually having a workshop a week from now, prior to our council meeting to kind of hear the results of that housing study, and I think our, our growth planning study will probably be about a month after that. I think one of the things that we're finding out now is that we're starting to run out of space for retail and commercial growth, and then we're down about ninety lots that are available to build on in town. And so we're really trying to prepare ourselves for, you know, future growth, and some of that's going to be some conversations the council needs to have on infrastructure and the costs that go with expanding that. We really are just running out of buildable lots, both commercial and residential growth, and really need to kind of address that. And so we're, we're starting to look at that from the city. Some of, I guess, the projects that are currently going on that I think utilities always like to know about because it obviously expands your guys' customer base. We've got the first phase of a new set of apartments that are going up on Michael Court, which is on the north side of town by Deer Park Apartments. I think they're building four or five units, I think will be about twelve to sixteen units each. So they've started moving dirt up there, or at least preparing the site for construction. The Uptown Grand, which is the old medical clinic site, that's got, that's been pushed back probably to a start date of the fall of two thousand and twenty-four. I think it's something to do with just financing and the city trying to get that site ready for construction. On top of that, we've got Family Dollar is moving into town, Five Below is moving into town, a little kind of some of the newer businesses that are coming in. The city still continuing to look at selling our event center, and we're actually getting ready to send out a citizen survey that we do every four years, will go out this summer just to get some feedback on how we're operating as a city. And then I guess the, the next big project that we're going to have to have a conversation with at the council level is on the city's sales tax. That's set to expire in two thousand and twenty-six, and we're going to start looking at, is there a desire to look to, to revamp that? And if we look to revamp that, there's a process that we need to go through. Right now, there's thirty-six sales tax proposals out of the legislature. And so that list keeps expanding because it's been a couple years since they've actually done any kind of affirmative reading. And right now, what we're hearing is that the Senate's trying to push forward the sales tax, and the House Tax Chair said they're not going to listen to any sales tax proposals. So we just have that in the back of our mind as we look to really have a conversation what the city's going to do with its sales tax when that says it expires here in a couple of years, and so. I think it's a lot of what's going on right now, unless you guys had any specific questions regarding any projects or anything else that's going on here at the city.
Man, as you guys plan for intermediate long-term growth of the city, has there been any of the four directions in town that you see the growth coming in, or southeast west?
Um, I think.
Both commercial and residential?
Yeah, I think residential, and this will be highlighted in our growth planning study. We've identified the southeast corner, that area back behind the Nards, there's two large parcels that are, I would say, prime for growth and development. And then the other one would probably be the northwest, so you're east of kind of Gulf Course Road, or north and east of Gulf Course Road, School Road, kind of that, that area up in there. Really what we see is probably three prime areas, so two areas in the southeast, and then here in the northwest part of town, as we see is really prime for residential growth. And then it's that intersection of twenty-two and seven for commercial growth is what we've really identified. Thank you. That's it for me, unless you guys had any questions, and otherwise I think Jeremy was going to spend a lot of time talking today, so.
I try not to, so. But feel free to ask questions, stop me at any point, just give you guys a high-level overview of kind of things going on in the industry. Obviously, you guys are all well aware of what's going on in the energy industry. You know, there's a significant shift in philosophy and change with, you know, how generation is designed, built. Of course, there's the carbon-free movement, and I'll touch a little bit on that piece. So high-level overview, there's probably more things going on in the energy industry in the next decade than there has probably been in the last hundred years in this industry. So part of my challenge and part of the board's challenge is to move and change with, change in philosophy and change in things going on at the legislative, you know, the state and at the federal level, and, and that seems to have significant momentum. And so obviously, you know, we need to be a part of that, and we need to find ways to make sure that we're staying financially solvent, but yet moving towards things that are going on and really address those and be cutting some of those things. So high-level overview from a financial standpoint, kind of where we're at today, you know, we're stable from a financial aspect. We've got, you know, a sound balance sheet as far as cash balances, we're paying down our debt, you know, as we should in a timely manner from our regard. So, you know, right now, we're stable. Obviously, there is some headwinds coming down the pike. We have a significant increase in capex over the next five years. That's going to be more aggressive from a couple different aspects. One, we've got some aging infrastructure, particularly at some of our facilities, and so we've got to make some modifications and some improvements with the local generation we have in town, because our mission obviously is to make sure first and foremost that we're reliable, that customers can depend on natural gas, electricity, and not have outages. And so reliability is always at the top of the board's mind. In order to, to be reliable, we've got to make sure that we're making the improvements that we need to, to keep, keep that in place, that helps the city, it helps Miles or the E D A to promote businesses coming into town, they can kind of hang their hat on, you know, cheap rates and reliability. So that's first and foremost important from our standpoint. So we do have some improvements going on around town. You'll see downtown facility, you'll see some improvements on our waste, on our tower, water tower. But right now, we're in phase two of kind of a four-phase project to revamp that and refurbish, you know, some of the wood and some of the slates down there. That cooling tower obviously is used to cool our engines that we have in our downtown plant. Some of you are around here, when we started putting in the first ones, you know, we've got three newer generation engines downtown, they're all natural gas in town. We've got one that was put in in two thousand and thirteen, and we've got our two newest ones, two Caterpillars, that were put in in seventeen, eighteen. So those three add about thirty megawatts of generation to our town. That's important, and it always has been important, I think, from a utility standpoint and the community, that if we ever got severed from the grid or transmission lines went down, we could self-generate a large part of our load in town for, you know, emergency things, our hospital, our, our public safety, our businesses, and so. So we've got some improvements going on in the downtown plant. You'll see we'll be removing a couple older units, starting this spring, summer, fall-ish area. We've got an old unit eight, an old unit three and four that are going to be coming out. That will open up some space down there for future technology, whatever that may be. If it's not natural gas, it may be battery storage, or maybe, you know, other technologies that we'll need to put in place, or at least look at from a generation standpoint as one of our options as we move forward on this carbon-free standard. And so we'll be looking to do some of that. Up at our main plant, our baseload plant, which is up by our office, you know, we don't use that the way it was originally designed back in the early nineties. The markets came into place, so we still use it for sales predominantly, where we sell power on the market, we sell power through contracts, and any wholesale revenue that we make up for that offset our costs in town. So that helps keep stability here within our customer base here as far as our retail rate. So that's an important avenue. And what then we keep looking at, you know, that internal generation model, you know, does it make sense, is it still cost-effective to keep local generation? Is there a point where, you know, it doesn't make sense anymore? And as we've kind of watched these standards play out over the next, you know, couple decades, you know, those are the things that staff and the commissioner are charged with is, does it make sense to keep putting significant amounts of money into certain assets that may not be as relevant moving forward? So we'll be having more in-depth conversations at the board level about, you know, those generating units. The big plan right now, we've got capacity contracts locked in on those, you know, until two thousand and thirty, so we've got still seven years worth of commitments on generating additional revenue, so we need to keep those in play at least for another seven years minimum. If it still makes sense to keep those in play, you know, long-term, because we can generate additional revenue off of those, you know, we'll certainly look to do those things. So, so those things are kind of what's going on. Couple of the big capital asset expense account, things that we're going to have moving forward, we're going to have a big improvement on one of our substations up kind of the industrial park, Oaks Park area, we have our Hutch substation up there. We're going to be improving that substation for regional reliability. That just got approved through the market, MISO market, that's the fall, that's about a ten, ten million dollar project that we're going to be doing. Those things come around once every four or five decades. So in this region, there has to be several approval processes. One, our, our load balancing authority, which is Great River Energy, has to sign off on it, Missouri River, who our wholesale supplier, has to sign off that it's for regional reliability. And then ultimately, the market has to say, yes, we need this project done to maintain reliability in not only predominantly the central part of Minnesota, but the northern part of the market region. There's a couple of constraints. Obviously, as load starts to increase and more people are putting in renewables, and more people are, you know, businesses are going in on the east part of the metro, we have to bolster our transmission grid in this area, so that asset we own, so we're going to be making a significant improvement there. So there will be some cash flow timing on that that the board's going to have to wrestle with, that's a significant dollar value. It's going to be probably a four or five-year project to get that finally completed. That's scheduled to be completed by the end of two thousand and twenty-six. We will be able to recover revenue on that from the market, and that is estimated to start in two thousand and twenty-eight. So there's a cash flow timing where we're going to have upfront the money and then collect our return on that over time. So we'll be talking about that, but that's a big project. We are working on unit one, we're going to be pulling that out of service here this fall. We've got to make some improvements on the big unit up at our baseload. So we're anticipating late summer, early fall, we're going to be pulling that big unit out and shipping it down to Texas to do some significant improvements. The rest of me, that's going to be in the million-dollar range to make improvements there. So ultimately, our five-year capital, we've got about twenty-three million budgeted for five-year capital right now, which is significantly more than we typically have had in the last couple decades. And so, you know, obviously making sure that we have cash balance and we've got cash flow appropriately factored into those projects is going to be critical for us as we move forward, so. So those are some of the bigger projects, and then we just have our ongoing maintenance on our distribution systems, our transmission systems as we kind of move forward. So those are going to be anomaly projects that are outside of our normal stuff, that will be important for reliability, not only locally but regionally and in the market, so.
Jeremy, you talk about reliability, how, how is our, how is Hutchinson compared to?
Well, we just got our two thousand and twenty-two reliability award again, so we're in the top one percent of the country as far as reliability. So we'll, we'll be sending out a press release here shortly to the paper, essentially saying that we're in the top echelon of reliability within the country, and that's comparing against, against other municipals, against co-ops and investor-owned utilities. I can tell you unequivocally, we're always at the hot, top end of reliability. One, we have most of our stuff on the ground, which is critical for reliability. A lot of co-ops, a lot of investor-owns have all their distribution systems running overhead on power lines. We don't have that, most of the lines that you see that we have in tonne transmission at, at this point, high voltage. So reliability is first and foremost very critical here. It's important to our big customers in town, it's important to the people in the industry, it's important to the residential customers, and so I think. How many years running is that?
Since we've probably been taking the data, I mean, it's.
Fifteen, twenty years?
Yeah. Formally, they've been taking data for the last twelve, twelve years, but for that, we're still keeping track of it.
Right. So absolutely critical, and again, it's always been a focal point of the commission as long as I've been here, while we have opened up the city at the utilities, that that's, that's kind of stayed a focus, so. So those are, those are good things that we can, you know, tout about in the community and talk about, and, you know, we, we market ourselves that way, and the city does as well, so. So some of these big projects are just an extension of that. They are really dollar values than what we typically see, but they're needed nonetheless, Any questions on any of that capex, any things that?
Isn't reliability just a measure of like how many outages we have, or how long the outages are, or how do they figure that?
It's a combination of several different metrics. Some of it's the duration that, that you're out, some of it's the frequency that you're out, the impact of minutes. So if there's an outage, how many people did it impact and for how long? So we've got measurements, Katie, Sadie, Safie, I mean, there, there are a lot of metrics that are used to monitor that stuff, and then you have to report on those things. So every time you have an outage, how long was the outage, how many customers did it affect, how long were you out, and then how, how long did it take you to get back up? The other piece that's important, I think, for us is that we have built-in redundancy in town. So if we have an outage, we can reroute power and get people back up and running. So a lot of times, our duration of outages are fairly minimal, unless we have a major, you know, some troubleshooting, we just, we can't relocate it, or we have to shut down some major parts of the system to do that, so.
Dave, what are the most common instances that cause outages?
I'm sure, remember this, because we just guys got them, they're all down. If I could just take, the most common is probably just, well, animals number one. We have a couple spots where we had a couple, this year we had two squirrel instances. We've only had, we've only had last year eight outages. So to put it, when you ask that question, there isn't nothing that's more specific. Last year, we had actually two vehicle accidents that knocked out power, and then we had one actually bad underground wire, three diggings, you know? So it's, to answer that question, there's nothing that's most common, but we don't have that many to keep track of, if that makes sense.
The only way we can get better on the squirrels is to have people out hunting.
That's right.
Maybe you could partner with the P D.
But that is the most common outage for overhead.
When they're all squirrels. Husk turkeys, they could get squirrels. So David, you said eight outages total?
Yeah, for last year, yeah. So per perspective, if you're, if you're a citizen of our customer of Hutch Utilities, you could expect to be out of power less than nine minutes last year.
Sure.
Is what, is what our measures measure, so that's kind of what you're hanging your hand on.
As Dave mentioned, Jeremy, I know Miles tells that all the time, when we're trying to recruit businesses in the town, is that you have reliable power here.
So to compare that, do you guys know like the numbers from McCall County Co-op, just for like a local comparison?
I couldn't do their actual.
Yeah.
I'd have to go and research what they actually have, but I can go the, from our benchmarking metrics, from our neighbors and co-ops and people our size.
Yeah.
You're, they're in the, you know, probably thirties and forties minutes easily.
Sure.
So whatever we've been single digits is probably above this, we're going to get. So I, so in the average outage, the number of outages, again, that depends on the community, it depends on their, you know, there's a lot of different factors in there.
Yeah.
For the number of them, but it's more about, we like to hang our hand on more of the duration than the frequency, because we, going back to Jeremy's point, we build in redundancy into our system, so you're never going to stop an outage, but it's how quickly you get it back on. You know, that's kind of our goal, so.
Nine minutes is a pretty good outage.
That's pretty happy.
I hate to start you off, so it's town, so there you go.
Jeremy, on your project, you did, imagine that solar project you did, too, you know, not a big project for it.
That was a big project, yeah. That was just under three-quarters of a megawatt up by our plant that we put in, and that's actually been performing better than we anticipated. You know, we figured that was going to provide electricity about fourteen percent of the time, capacity factor, and we were running eighteen last year. So that, that was a good addition. You know, obviously, we're trying to do incremental things to move, you know, towards cleaner, you know, generation, carbon-free, but it's got to make economical sense to, to do those things. And some things we just aren't going to be able to scale up to the size that we may need moving forward. Either there's a capacity here locally, or the funding is, you know, maybe too expensive as we move forward. So we just, we're going to have to play some of those scenarios out as we move forward, but we've got a blend of solar, a little bit of solar. We get some solar off the market, we get some solar and some renewables from our wholesale supplier, and I can touch on that as well. And everyone is trying to transition that way and try to create more of their generation mix, you know, more carbon-free. Of course, nuclear is a big conversation topic, and, you know, does that stay in the fold, not only in the state of Minnesota, but also in the market, you know, as we move forward, so. And so some of those things, you know, we'll talk with the board about too, and they're going to have to wrestle with, because as we try to make some of those, meet some of those standards, you know, we're going to have to look at other generation mix or other ways to accommodate some of those state guidelines that we have in place now, so.
Jeremy, what's the, like, what's the percentage, or how, how much do they give, like, for wind power and solar? How much does that go onto the grid for you? Do you know?
Well, I can tell you, if you're talking about generation, or you're talking about actually the capacity, the generation.
Generation.
So right now, I just got the two thousand and twenty-two's numbers. So there's three, so I'll just preface, I don't want to get into too much detail, but there's three regions in the market. The northern region we're at actually has the most renewables, because we have a lot of wind up here, Marshall, Iowa, Dakotas. But if you look at the entire market from, all the way from Canada down to the Gulf, right now renewables, if you talk of renewables, which is just basically hydro, wind, and solar, you know, you're at about fifteen percent, and most of that's wind. Wind is predominantly the market in the MISO. You have about one percent solar and about fourteen percent wind, and most of that's up here. And then you got about fourteen, fifteen percent nuclear in there. So it's a, still a small percentage of the overall. It's still sixty-seven percent is coal and natural gas in the market, and they're trying, obviously trying to transition to more renewables, but that takes time, it takes a shortening of permitting processes to do that, and so that's obviously some of the concerns and constraints is, you know, as you're decommissioning a lot of these big baseload plants, how fast can you get, you know, renewables back on? And of course, the other big part of that is renewables don't always, they're not always dispatchable, right? The sun isn't always shining, and the wind isn't always blowing, and so you can definitely see in the market, when the wind isn't blowing in this northern region, the prices jump up because you have to supply it with coal and more nuclear and more natural gas, and so you can see that those things are intermittent resources, they're not completely dispatchable and are going to need them too. So the market's going to have to find a way to blend that stuff over time and do it pragmatically, but that's just going to take time to do some of that.
Jeremy, last, like, late summer, you were saying that there might be some brownouts or gold and brownout. That didn't happen, did it?
No, it didn't. Nope, it didn't. There was enough dispatchable generation for some of that. They actually kept some generation from going offline as well. Some of that was supposed to be down for maintenance, and they just said, no, you're going to have to defer maintenance. Of course, we know that that.
Prolongs it.
That prolongs the problem, right? There's going to be times when stuff is going to break and go down when they didn't want it to because they didn't have time to do preventative maintenance, so.
It seemed like the fine ad was real acceptable, I mean, you just.
Correct.
Whatever you had to.
It's, it's not ideal, I mean, we don't want to shed load in town, right? I mean, we talked about reliability, we don't want to have to shut people off and shed load and do some of those things. It's still going to be a concern for this summer, it's going to really be a concern for the next several years until they, you know, figure out, you know, what other generation can go on or slow down some of that. You've seen some of that, they've slowed down decommissioning plants because people don't want to have brownouts and blackouts, and they don't want the market to shed load, so.
When XL had their meetings in town, I didn't go with us. That won't affect us in any way, though. Are they just running a ton of new lines near here?
Correct. Yeah. And part of that's, obviously, some of it's, you know, the big one that they talked about, that's going to be more meeting their renewable standards, I mean, that's just an added renewable, you know, like, the problem you have with renewables is where you put renewables isn't where load centers are, right? You're putting them out in fields, you're putting them in areas where it's not heavily populated, so you have to be able to connect those generating facilities to the grid and to the load centers, where you have to run transmission lines in order to do that. So part of that, big one that they're talking about is connecting it to renewables down in the southwest part of the state. Some of the stuff that you saw in Winston was just them updating systems, just like we're going to have with our substation, we have to add more capacity. You know, they're improving their transmission lines along those corridors in anticipation, one for more renewables, but then also anticipation for increased reliability, right? As load grows out, you need to make sure that your system can support the increased load. So you'll start seeing more of that in pockets around, you'll start seeing it more in a lot of the southwest parts of the state where there's, you know, adding more wind and more large-scale renewables to those areas that they have to build out transmission as well in order to supply that to the grid, so. So you'll, you guys will see that periodically throughout projects. Couple other things, just staff, you know, we talked a little bit, a little bit about that, and we have consistent staffing up there, you know, we don't have a lot of turnover. We do have some people moving between departments up there, we're in the process of backfilling to natural gas positions up there, so we're hoping to get those filled here in the next two months. Obviously, we'd like to have those fully filled before the construction season comes around, but I don't think we're going to quite get there, but we need to get back to being fully staffed. We haven't been fully staffed on the natural gas side for most of the years now, so, you know, there's some things that we've got to do on that side with preventative maintenance and upkeep on our metering systems and some of our distribution systems. So we need to get kind of back to fully staffed and get back to just normal course of business as we move forward, so hopefully that will happen. We are backfilling our customer service supervisor up there. We did that internal show beginning up there shortly, and then she's an internal candidate, so we'll have an opening position up there in our cop and payroll area, and so we'll have to backfill that, and depending on how that fills out and how that works, if it's an internal, then we'll have another opening. So it's kind of a domino, but we're hoping to get fully staffed here in a few months, but ultimately, overall, we just don't have a lot of turnover up there, people like the environments that they're in, and so that's a good thing for us. Reliability is, is critical for us with employees and construction and running our systems and our regulatory requirements and all that, so that's an important piece. So we're doing good from that standpoint. requirements and all that, so that's an important piece, so we're doing good from that standpoint. Carbon-free regulations 2040, that's the big buzzword, you know, that got put into place, we've talked a little bit about the sustainability committee, Tim and I have talked about the city staff, you know, we are going to have to meet requirements moving forward now, so there's really two components of that, there's a carbon-free standard, which includes nuclear, and then within the carbon-free standard, there's a, what they call an eligible energy technology standard, which is essentially renewables, wind, solar, hydro, and so for the majority of municipal utilities, they're not going to have to worry about that, because they're a full requirement of a wholesale supplier or a joint action agency that provides them all their power and all their standards on their behalf, so unfortunately, we're not the lucky ones, we're not a full requirement of Missouri River Energy Services, we only get about seventy-five percent of our power from them, so they'll provide us a portion of our standard that we're going to need to meet those standards, but then we're going to also be responsible for making the other half, meet those other half of those standards, so I've been working through some scenarios and I'll be talking to the board about those things, but ultimately, what I can tell you is it's going to be more expensive, we're going to end up, in order to meet some of those standards, we're either going to have to buy REX renewable energy credits, we're either going to have to buy more renewables, or we're going to have to own some, you know, assets, so there's some various options that we can go down, or some options and paths to meet those standards that we're going to need to, but I do see we're going to be short, not necessarily so much in 2025, but in 2030, when that carbon-free standard wraps up to sixty percent carbon-free, we'll be short, you know, a bunch of kilowatt hours in renewables, so we'll have to meet some of those standards somehow, so they've assured us that there will be a renewable energy credit market out there, that you can buy REX, of course, the rules of the game haven't really been designed or defined yet, they're going to start that this fall, and then the other piece that isn't real clear in the standards, how they're going to account for market purchases and market sales, because obviously, we have generation here, and we sell them to the market and make money out of that, so if they're going to consider, every time we generate into the market, we have to offset that with renewable credits or renewable energy, there will be a cost to that, so they're going to start that process this fall between the Department of Commerce and the PUC, so we'll be involved in those conversations about how they handle the wholesale supply, wholesale power, but we are going to have to meet those standards as we move forward, so we'll be working on strategies to, you know, get us down that path as economical as we can as we move forward, so, so we're not immune to that.
Jeremy, is that a realistic goal, or do you think that they're going to have to stay, you know, we're pushing you guys too hard, or do you think that is a realistic goal?
I would say the consensus in the industry is hundred percent isn't realistic, eighty to ninety is realistic with the technology that we currently have, so I think that's achievable.
And I think what I'm hearing out here is about half of the Hutch residents feel like that's even attainable, and they're really worried about the cost increase in instituting new technologies before, so we're investing in technology and two years later it's outdated, so I think that's some of the issues that we're hearing out, that neither I am.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are good points, I mean, those are the things that we're going to, you know, we're struggling with, and, you know, they don't really want to get into details of what that costs for people, you know, we've tried bringing up the point of, well, that's great to put all these renewables in, but you haven't taken any consideration of how much it's going to cost to put in transmission and build the system up to do that, and so they just don't want to hear, you know, those types of comments, you know, they have an agenda and they're willing to push that, and I think we can get there, but we're going to have to do it smartly, and we're going to have to do it incrementally on pieces, I think the big piece will be if there's a market for REX out there, that's, you know, we've asked, you know, how are you going to ensure that there's a renewable energy credit market where people can buy REX that's reasonably cost, so it's not, so expensive, and they don't have really an answer for that, all they're saying is, yeah, you know, it's our job to make sure there's a market out there, but if you can't put in enough renewable projects to create REX for people, then people may not be in compliance, so, so there's, there's some thought process that needs to continually happen, I think, again, the rules of the game, you know, I think when they design that, that will have to be thought about on that piece, but, you know, we're certainly going to be short out here, and we're going to have to, again, the three options are, you really procure REX, assuming there's a market that's fairly inexpensive, you either have to get into a contract with another wholesale supplier or another company that's, you're a part of a project, or you're going to have to build your own stuff, those are really the three options, so what, you know, what's the least effective avenue to do that? I've had conversations with our wholesale suppliers, some of the big wholesale suppliers around the country, you know, they're not opposed to cost sharing in projects with smaller utilities like ours, you know, so there's an avenue there where they just, you know, they're not going to say, no, you just, you can't come to the table for a certain percent of a project, but really, it's become on the cost, right? What's the cheapest cost for us to meet those standards, and of course, we're the same, what is every utility, right? They're all going to look to do the same thing on those pieces. ILUs, it's a little easier for them to go to the PUC, build projects and go in front of PUC and say, here's what it costs us to meet these standards, and then the PUC approves the rates, it's a little harder for it to do it here locally, you know, the state knows that, locally owned utilities just don't like raising rates, because they have a connection with the community, they live here, they have friends here, so they understand the business model that we run versus investor-owned utility, but at the end of the day, they feel, well, we're going to make the investor-owned utilities move in that direction, all utilities should move in that direction, so, so like I said, we'll try to do our things to kind of meet that.
So Jeremy, what I'm hearing is that we're likely going to have to be raising rates in the near future?
I think it's inevitable, and not only because of the standards, but just the cost of the industry, you know, our cost of equipment, infrastructure costs, transformer costs, you know, we're not seeing the thirty percent, five percent, we're seeing thirty, forty percent.
Your guys' lead time, this is what I'm going to do. Your guys' lead time is the same as for us when we're trying to get equipment, too.
Right, I mean, it's just, and there's really no add insight, we've asked the federal government to slow down, for sure, the distribution transformers, and we've said, hey, they need to bolster those, of course, you know, they went to suppliers, and they've said, what's it going to take, and manufacturers have said, well, it's going to take sixty million dollars for us to add another third line, and you're going to help us cost share, and they've said, forget that, we're not looking to give you sixty million dollars, so everything is just slowing, you know, we can't, we can't get the right-sized distribution transformers, and they can speak to this, most people are putting in transformers that don't, that aren't efficient, because they can't get the transformers that they really need, so you're creating an inefficient grid, because development's going on, and you just can't wait four years or three years to build things, and so we've got supply chain issues going on, we've got significant cost inflation increases going on in our industry, and that's outside of costs that we can recover through our power cost adjustments, so those are going to be things at the board, as we look at the cost of service study coming up here this week, you know, they're going to have to wrestle with some of those things, and how do we handle those things? We've leveraged a lot of our generation, all the generation we have locally, we've maximized, you know, contracts and revenues through other sources, but it isn't enough to cover just the cost decreases that we're seeing operationally, so, so that is some headwinds we have, just the equipment costs, and that's not going away anytime soon, I mean, we're here in five years, six years, we don't know, we can't get you equipment, so, you know, we're just hoping that it doesn't stymie our progress as far as building out developments, of course, people don't want to share inventory when they don't know if they're ever going to give any back, so, so we're running into that with, you know, some of your peers as well.
Jeremy, do you want to talk about, we're coming up later on this week, we have a meeting to talk about the most recent findings of rate study, you want to talk about what is the rate study, how often do we do it, why do we do it?
Sure. A couple you were around, I think the last year, I know you were around the last rate study, so in the industry, we typically do a rate study every three to five years, depending on what's going on with your rates and your community, and if things have significantly changed, we haven't had a whole lot of change community-wide and different things going on, so we're, at this point, we're doing them every five years, and there's really a couple of things that you're looking at in a cost of service study, one, you're looking at, is every rate class in your community paying their fair share of the distribution, transmission system, and covering your operation costs, so right now, we have a residential class, a small general class, which is more of the small businesses, a large general class, which is the bigger businesses, and then an industrial class, which has a few of the big manufacturing companies in them, so one of the first things you look at is, is every class paying their fair share to run the utility in town? And the last time we had a cost of service study back in '05, we had inequity between the classes, so what we did with the last cost of service study is we created glide paths in order to balance all those different rate classes, to make sure that they're all paying their fair share of the system and to run it up utility locally here, so we did the heavy lifting as far as readjusting the classes four years ago, we instituted two, two-year rate adjustments, they weren't really rate increases, they were just readjusting the rates, at that time, the commission said, we don't want to raise any more revenue, we want to stay where we're at with revenue, we just need to get the classes in balance between each other, so the residential class isn't paying any more than they should, the industrial class isn't paying any more than they should, so we did that five years ago, so now we're five years into it, we have our second kind of cost of service study review to say, hey, how are, how things gone the last four years, you know, how was your cash position, you know, how are your retail rates looking now as you move forward, have your, have your classes still stayed equitable between each class, so we're into the second cost of service study here, and so that will be on Thursday, where the consultant will be coming out, and he'll be kind of reviewing the facts and findings of his analysis on some of those things, I can't tell you just plenary looking at things, we're fairly equitable between the classes still, others, little, maybe a little bit of adjustment that could be done, but the majority of it has been done through the last couple of rate readjustments, you will know this probably, just as I mentioned, operating costs are going up, and so there, you know, there'll be some conversations that the commission's going to have to wrestle with about rates, and, you know, where do you go from here, and, you know, what's your palette for changing rates and doing different things, and what's the impact going to be for various customers of usage on that, so we'll be looking at those things in relation to keeping, you know, debt service coverage where you need to, cash balances where you need to, operating cash where you need to, and so we'll be looking at that, and then what I'm anticipating is, we'll have plenary reviews, I'm assuming we'll get back together with the board, we'll talk about where that's up in depth about, you know, where they want to go, he, the consultant certainly is going to ask for some feedback from the board on where do you want to go before any rate designs would happen or any viewpoints of things we look at, so he's going to be looking for feedback from the commission with what initial analysis is saying, and then as we've done, if there's any change in rates, you know, those would come back down to the council, the board would approve any type of rate adjustments, commission, and then they would come down to the council for review, and I would assume we would have a review of what the information was, again, certainly, as you're all invited to come up Thursday and listen to the consultant as well as we move forward, so.
If I remember right, five years ago, the commission came up, went through the rate study, we got the findings, we made some philosophical decisions, and said, let's glide past this, they make incremental changes to get these things to be in balance, and we came to the council with a two-year request for approval of rates, and we reviewed it, and then did two more, and it went just as planned, so we didn't feel comfortable saying, hey, let's, let's go to council with a five-year plan, let's do it for two, reassess it, see if it's doing what it's supposed to do, and then take it from there, and it worked, I would think quite well.
Correct, yeah, and we ran a six-year glide path on the electric division, because those were a little bit more in balance between the different rate classes, we're on the gas side, we had a disparity in one of our classes, so they used, we used a nine-year glide path, where, hey, over nine years, we would get to where they're all fairly equitable, and so we haven't done anything, you know, so we're at four years on the electric and four years on the gas, and now we have the next cost of service, and so, you know, there'll be some consideration about how does a glide path look, do we still move down those glide paths, do we need to reassess certain, you know, other components of those, and then the other piece that you're looking to do in that, alternative, making your classes equitable, is you're making sure that your rate structures match your cost structures, so you have variable costs and you have fixed costs running a utility, so your fixed costs should be covered by a fixed revenue every month, which is our monthly meter customer charge, so you're also trying to make sure that you're in balance with those, because what happens if you're trying to collect all your revenue through energy usage, and you have a really bad summer, or you have low usage in the calendar year, you end up putting yourself in a bad situation, because you haven't collected the revenue you need to cover all your operating costs, whether it's your fixed costs or your variable costs, so that's the other piece of that component is, for your variable costs, that it takes to run your organization, you should collect that revenue through the energy charge, the variable, because that can go up and down based on what people use, and then the cost components that are fixed costs should be covered by a monthly cost, making sure that those are equitable, so, so that's kind of the second big piece that they look at when they do cost of service studies, no different than in the water and sewer and some of that stuff, you've got your own cost components, so you're making sure that you've got a stable revenue stream to cover that stuff, and those cost components match well, so, so yeah, if you guys can make it up, or like to see some information, please step up on Facebook there, and you read my letters.
What time is that, Jeremy?
One.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock. Two o'clock on Thursday.
I had one thirty, and there was some reason. Better shut the door.
He'll be waiting for us. Need to school them.
We said all day.
Get there, yeah. Yeah, let's go get them out of the back room.
Any kind of questions on any of that cost of service stuff, general benchmarks? So, general benchmarking as far as where we're at with rates, you know, we just went through last fall, we benchmarked a lot of our electric rates relative to not only our municipal peers, but peers around the country, peers in the Midwest, investor-owned utilities, co-ops, I can tell you, generally speaking, on the electric side, we're anywhere from five to twenty percent below average retail rates on the electric side, so we're doing very well on that side. I just pulled the EIA's 2021 information, which is the federal agency that monitors the energy industry, in Minnesota, it was average retail rate was eleven, just over eleven cents a kilowatt hour in Minnesota, and ours for 2022, I just looked at this morning, was about nine point one cents, so we're about two cents per kilowatt hour below the state average here, I can keep in mind, a lot of the customers are investor-owned customers, so they have a different business model, but for you guys, generally speaking, we're very competitive on our rates, we're always below average, our residential is one of the cheaper residential rates you're going to find around the country, and so, you know, we've kept those rates low intentionally, we've figured out other ways to generate revenue to keep our rates low, so, you know, we're well below peer on the residential side, commercial side, industrial side, we're right about where we need to be, on the all in costs is right about where other industrial customers are, so we're sitting good there, but for commercial and residential, we're below average, as far as, we're better than the average, on the gas side, we're right about average, when you look at our peers, when you look at investor-owned gas companies, and, you know, we're right, where we need to be, we're not high, we're not low, we're right about where we're at, so we're competitive on the gas side as well, the one area that we're less competitive on is our contract, our industrial customers, they're not a normal retail customer on the gas side, they're contract customers, so they just pay to transport on our pipeline, and they pay for their own commodity, their own gas, so because of that dynamic, we're actually cheaper than mostly the industrial class peers that are just normal retail customers of the utility, we don't have that arrangement in a few spots, so we're more competitive than a lot of people on the industrial side, but overall, for you guys, it's just a good thing to know in case you hear those things, or people ask, you know, how does Hutch's utilities rates compare to others, we're, we're doing very well from that, from that regard, so.
Jeremy, there, I know a couple towns have hooked up to the line, is there any more out there that are trying to maybe tap into it?
On the natural gas side?
Yes.
We are working on a couple of projects right now, a couple of big ones, we're not necessarily communities, but some big customers along the transmission line, and we're in some early stages of trying to build out some lateral projects on that for a big customer down south, and there's a couple others that inquire about those things, of course, some of that, you know, you have to go through permitting, and you have to go through state agencies, and some of that stuff takes a while, and, you know, pretty soon, they start looking into all the regulatory stuff that's required. And, you know, pretty soon they start looking into all the regulatory stuff that's required, and the costs become sometimes a little bit more than what they anticipated. So then that slows down progress. But we do have some prospective customers looking to come on with some significant transportation load.
So who's on it now is Brown, right?
Brown's on there, Newall uses our transmission system on there. And they're, you know, they're not going anywhere, you know, their load's going to be there. We've got a plant down south that's looking to come on individually. We've had a couple other smaller communities, but they want us to do more of the work for them. You know, they don't just want to transport, they want us to do all the regulatory stuff and keep them in compliance with MinOps and all that. And that's just, you know, we play that balance of helping neighbors, but yet we don't want to do your work either. We got enough of our own regulatory stuff that we got to maintain and keep compliant because we do want a transmission system, which is uncommon in the municipal world. You don't see many municipal utilities on a transmission line like we have. So it's a great asset, it's a great opportunity to leverage revenues and leverage streams, but it also takes a lot of work because you have to meet federal and state regulatory requirements that you wouldn't have if you didn't own that. So we try to balance both of those, but Brown's definitely on, we do a lot of their work, both on the electric and natural gas side. We do a lot of their billing, we do a lot of their maintenance, we help them keep their systems up. So we are good neighbors with a lot of our communities around here. So we are working on a few projects. And we're working on one project for renewable natural gas. You know, someone would like to interject some renewable gas onto the system. That's becoming more of a popular thing in the industry as well, you know, turning manure and turning, you know, different possible things into renewable natural gas. There is a big market for renewable natural gas, not only from the actual gas itself, but also the attributes that come up with it, just like recs on the electric side. You can sell the renewable natural gas attributes. There's huge markets out in California on the West Coast. So a lot of people are looking to produce, you know, the renewable natural gas and then interject it onto the system. So we're looking at some of that as well, where we can do some buildup for prospective customers. They would pay for the cost of putting the project in. We would take a portion of the renewable natural gas and blend it in with what we have. So we're looking at some of those things. And so we're going to get more of those inquiries as time goes on, just because of where the industry's going on both the electric and natural gas. And if they make sense, we'll look at those. If they don't, you won't certainly with, you can't blend too much of that with normal natural gas because then you have regulatory requirements and issues. So you can only find a small percentage of some of that. So we'll look at some of those things as well. But any opportunity that we can leverage on the pipeline, we certainly will as we transition and move things. It's a good question. Any questions on the gas side? Obviously, that's a good asset for us. We use that to leverage for our generation rate on the electric side. So it saves us a lot of money of transporting costs since we own that pipeline. Okay? Dave, you want to talk about the streetlights and kind of what's going on with that project?
Yeah, we started, I suppose, back in 17, 18, we started changing all the streetlights out on during road projects, LED, the same type of fixtures, we're making an LED. And then, excuse me, in 2022, this last year, we started an actual LED conversion, where we started converting roughly 230, 250 lights per year with a plan to be a six-year timeframe. Currently, there's 2,022 lights in town. And right now, after this year's conversion, we'll have 980 of them converted over to LED, primarily in the southwest and southeast part of town. And then next year, I mean, 2024 and '25, we'll move to the north. So that conversion's going really well with changing them over. We continue to do road projects in the city, obviously. We don't, we're trying to change those areas over, knowing we work with the city on future road projects, so we don't double up on them. But, yeah, so things are moving quite along really well with the conversion of LED.
You have issues with getting lights or anything like that?
No, we did it 20, last year, the battery change has come back quite a bit. But we were working with the suppliers, so we actually put an order in back in August of '21, so that helped us quite a bit, ordering them about four months early. So, no, we're not seeing that anymore, but they were working with us. We have been planning this for a couple of years, kind of. So, no, the conversion's going really well.
Is LED, um, is there any changes that are going to be made in LEDs? Are they going to get less expensive, more available? Or are they going to keep the same wattages that present day?
That's a good question. That's one of our reasons why we did this over a long, like a six-year plan, is we didn't really want to go and do the whole city at one time and get stuck with that technology for the entire city. We know the technology's going to improve, and we know that things are going to change. So going over a period of six to seven years of changing over, we can capture some of that newer technology as well, and then we don't also be changing the entire city out the same year they all failed, right? They haven't exposed them last roughly 20 years, and we've had very good luck with the one we put in. It's really cut down on our streetlight allergies. Obviously, we started feeding them with power, so the power is typically the issue, right? When the light goes bad, but the fixtures have been holding up really well. We have, after the first couple of years, a different color of light was an issue because it's a lighter light, brighter. We did work with the city, we dialed down. We can, that was one of the new technologies that came out, they're adjustable now. So you can adjust the wattages from 50 to 120, I think. So we set them at 70, and typically, that's kind of how we found it works. We get in some, maybe some a little darker roads, they like so many holes on it, they want it a little brighter, we can dial them up. So we have some options now as well. But the complaints have really gone down since they started lighting, and it's given
Good question. Electric vehicles, touch a little bit on that, and that's kind of been the hot topic too, right? It's electrification and renewables. So we've been working on some of that. We met with Mike and John Paulson the other day from the city's perspective. I know the city has an initiative moving forward, and certainly, we want to make sure that we're doing things in conjunction and tangent with those guys in the city with some of the decisions that you guys will be making from the city's perspective. From the utility standpoint, we are looking at crafting, you know, programs or a program that's more robust that we want to bring forward to the commission related to residential charging and EVs and how we're going to accommodate the assumption that there'll be greater penetration of electric vehicles at some point and more people wanting to put in electric chargers. We have a rebate program right now where we'll rebate a portion of the charger cost if a residential customer puts something in. But we want to look at, do we need to expand that from not only covering a portion of the charger cost, but do we look at covering a portion of the insulation cost? Do we look at changing our rate structure to entice or make sure that we're trying to keep our load profile down during peak times of the day and try to encourage people to, you know, charge in the evenings when it's cheaper power, not only for us, but it creates less grid reliability issues? And so we're working through a lot of those things right now. We certainly know that it's going to take a little bit of time for it to come out here relative to some of the bigger metro cities and some of the cities around the country. But yet, we want to be proactive and be ahead of that piece and make sure that we've got a good program, at least talked about or discussed, so that if we want to implement something, we certainly can go down that path ahead of time. So we're working on some of those things. We met with the city staff, you know, they've got things that we talked about from other aspects, building codes and developments, and how do you handle certain, you know, some of those things. We'll certainly try to craft something that makes sense to be beneficial for customers in town, be beneficial from a utility standpoint, too, that we're trying to get people to use electricity when it's cheaper for everyone. So we're working on some of those things, Dave and Nick. And I have been looking at and researching and talking to different communities about what they're doing. But we know we need to be involved in an EV program. Obviously, the state, there's a big push towards electrification, not only with mass transit, but also moving towards more electrification, not only with vehicles, but heat pumps. That's the big push. And so we'll, as programs come available, or we think about what we think we need for this community, we'll work on some of those things to be proactive on those two. So that's obviously a hot topic.
Jeremy, how's the charging station downtown? How's that operated?
It's charging pretty good. We just looked at that, it was, actually, just talked to Nick, the 29?
So, well, we can take metrics on it.
Sure.
For the users, they call them unique users. So each month, and unique users, if I would go to it five times on one unique user, so it becomes one, right? And in the month of April, mid-March to mid-April, there was 29 unique users on it. And over, I want to say over a period of like three months, there was 130-some unique users. So it's getting used, and MRS and Nick will tell you, that charger that we have is the most used of any other, of any of their customers or other utilities, of their part of energy services. That charger's the one that is the most used charger that's up there. Now, we'll elaborate on the one that was put in, the second one is supposed to go in. It was supposed to go in last year, obviously, with lead times, it got delivered late last fall, they weren't able to get the concrete, everything done. But it is scheduled for the next two weeks, so that will be installed at, it's.
Rex Center.
Yeah. Pardon me?
Rex Center.
Rex Center, yes. I always say the two go backwards. At the Rex Center, it'll be installed hopefully in the next two, three weeks, and then it'll be running. So they are getting used, and they're getting used by different drivers, so that's good to see.
Yeah, similar style to the one downtown?
Exactly the same thing. Yep, same here.
MRS has 61 utility members between both Dakotas, Iowa, Minnesota, Wisconsin. So they have a lot of member utilities, and Morehead's one of them. So the fact that we have that this charger is their most utilized charger in their membership was actually shocking to me that ours gets utilized that much here. You can tell when you've got some of those other communities that have corridors and things, but.
Jeremy, when we were talking with John on the, when I started on the council, John talked to me about this EV thing. I think the assumption was no one was for it. And as I explained to him, we don't have any data as a city on the usage of EV in our community. I can trust the manufacturer, I can trust the news, I can go out and I'll get 300 different cars. They catch fire tomorrow, they go 5,000 miles, they're the best thing since sliced ham. We have all that. So when we were talking about this program, some people called because they're like, "We're investing in EVs," and I want people to know that this EV thing, in my opinion, and I'm not, don't speak for the rest of the council, was it's a pilot program to look at the data throughout the year to say, "Are we getting return on investment? What is our cost into the equipment?" All those different questions, because I can't make a decision as a councilman with all the other data when I have a 30-below day here, and I'm trying to compare data to Florida. So I, as I sit here and go, "Okay, what is the future of the EV here?" I don't think we can be behind the technology because we lose tourists, we lose people visiting our cities. People are buying EV vehicles, but we're losing gas tax, we're losing a lot of other things. And so we're saying, "Let's subsidize this," but we're taking away from gas tax and those kind of things. And I think we need to be very wide awake on this one as we move forward with it, just because we have the contentious issues. And I don't want to make this political, I want to make this about what makes sense for the community.
The only other thing that I think has, so is there a plan for the used batteries and all the solar panels that are, after their useful life, what's going to happen with those?
Well, that's a good question.
I thought I could get it, but the answer was.
You don't really want my answer. Obviously, with all this stuff, that's part of the equation, right? From the environmental side, things is.
Oh, no, it's not.
Right? You see that? Digging holes and putting fiberglass blades, and so that is a big concern. Of course, we try to bring those conversations up of the lifecycle costs and how do you repurpose that stuff? And some of that stuff gets kind of pushed to the side. But that is a legitimate concern by a lot of people as you move down that path of adding that type of technology. Are we doing more harm than good by, you know, stripping minerals out of the ground and then putting the stuff in landfills? And so they're working on some legislative stuff to try to, how do you accommodate for that? And how do you repurpose that? Can you repurpose some of that stuff? And what's it going to cost to break down those raw material components and reuse them? Same thing on the nuclear side. You know, they're repurposing a lot of that waste now because, you know, that's a huge sticking point for people that, to get them to support those things, you got to be able to find ways to reuse that stuff that isn't causing more environmental issues and not that, again, those are, some of those things are political versus being pragmatic in the industry, too. And that's a tough challenge. As we try to promote doing things the right way and being economical, sometimes they don't always go the way you want. And so it'd be foolish for us to sit here and go, "Well, we're just not going to do anything then," because you know you're going to have to move in some of those directions. Doing it the right way, though, I think is important. You know, what we talk about is you got to be pragmatic about how you do some of those things and take those things into consideration. Same, you know, with EVs. And we talk about things all the time, they want to go away from natural gas. Well, that's hard to go away from natural gas in the northern parts of the region, and there's a huge pushback on, not everything can be electrical because we don't have a grid that can support the electric capacity now. So how are you going to transition to everything electrical and you can't support the grid? And then you worry about lackouts and reliability issues. So there is some of that polarizing, those viewpoints going on. Unfortunately, particularly at the Minnesota legislature right now, they've got more people that feel going carbon-free and doing some of those things is more important than maybe taking a step back and, you know, allowing those things to happen organically, which they already have been. You know, the industry has already been moving in that direction with cleaner energy. You don't need to mandate things, you don't, you know, do things if it's cost-effective and it's economical and it doesn't raise the rates on people. Utilities will do those things because it's, some of that stuff is the right stuff to do. But they're also concerned about those other aspects, environmental concerns and the lifecycle costs of things. So it's a balancing, you know, you're trying to balance that, but yet understanding that there is a, there is a significant amount of viewpoint out there that we should do our part to reduce emissions as well. Of course, the other end of the spectrum as well, our little bit that we can do here in the United States is just being dwarfed by all the other countries that are looking to industrialize and are we really making an impact on that? That's at a lot of hearings. Of course, the response you get as well, just because we may not make, the global impact doesn't mean we shouldn't do anything, you know, in the United States and locally, and so.
I think the hard part is, I don't think any of us would disagree that it's a great thing, but you don't ever hear the sigh of what happens when these things reach their lifespan and the orders of go. And I think that's why people are resisting. It's why I'm resistant to it. This isn't magic, this power just doesn't come at zero cost. That's, not that I'm. Well, I think the interesting, somebody asked me, "Would you have a police cruiser as an EV right now with the current technology?" I said, "I don't know if I could answer that question right now based on the facts I have." Because I don't know the mileage, if it's a 30-below day, I don't know if it's going to start. So that's the kind of information we need to make in that decision to keep moving forward.
And, you know, they, I have people question us about why, the way we're backing the EV stuff. Well, we get the information right away instead of, you know, when you're out there, when this information comes out and it gets to us right away or to you guys, you know, so you can make a.
Well, I think the thing is, I told, you can argue with the state, you can argue with elements and say, "No, no, we don't want that here." It's a lot better to go and say, "This is going to cost us this much, and it's not functioning." And it's a lot easier to get a legislator and say, "Okay, there's an issue here with facts," based, then we can just change the law tomorrow. So I think that's why we had the pilot discussion thing, because there were, I think they thought we were bringing a fleet of cars in. It's like it's one car, one charger, and we don't have any money on the hook. It's a, it's a study. So just clarifying that, and as we move forward, it'll be interesting to see what you come up with for a plan.
Well, like we've, we've always, I mean, and I get that, but I think you look at the history of Hudson's, and we've always tried to be a step ahead with, when we're planning. And to me, we can fight all we want with the EV, but the market is, look at the commercials you saw at the Super Bowl, everything was EV, the market's going that way. And so if we completely ignore it, we're going to be sitting here at some point, years behind, wondering, "Why didn't we do anything?" And that's just not how we, we've operated as a city. And I think it hurts us nothing to at least study it and evaluate it and determine what works best for the city conditions.
Well, from my perspective, on the utilities commission, we're in the power business. So that is part of what we're supposed to be doing, is providing power where it's needed. And the percentage of the population that is using EV vehicles is very small, and it'll keep growing, I don't know where it's going to go. I don't know where it's going to go, but I think it's our job to, to be there for those power needs too. So I agree with you.
As, as that shifts away incrementally from fossil fuel powered vehicles onto EVs in our territory, while we'll lose gas tax because we're pulling ourselves too good in terms of, we are creating, uh, energy consumption within Hutchinson for utilities. So it's a give and take on both sides of that equation. I'm sure there is bigger gas tax going on, but consumption's gone up globally.
Really interesting to see the changes.
Yeah.
So I'd just like to know who this neighbor guy is that gives us kind of this information because he's really smart. Uh, any else, Jeremy?
No, not from my perspective, unless you guys have, you know, particular questions or have you guys, you know, I know you guys have mentioned a few things that you have come up from, you know, constituents, people in the community about Hutchinson utilities or things to consider. Is there anything else you guys are hearing from a consistency that?
Well, this is the usual, our taxes are too high and the utility rates are way too high.
And I just told you they're relatively.
Gas that neighbor.
I know.
I think I'm blessed to travel to other cities and see that.
That's a good point.
A question somebody asked me the other day, and this came up, was what percentage of our community members residential are using like the payment program or assistance programs?
So there's two different things, so when I, when I hear payment, I think of the budget plan.
Yes.
I would say there's three, four hundred.
Yeah.
Probably. People on the budget plan.
Out of seven thousand?
Uh, there's about six thousand residential customers, so it's a small percentage, um, that are on the budget plan. And I think a lot of those people do it just because they want to, it's an easy thing for them, it's a cash flow thing, right? I just know every month you're going to, you know, this is what I'm going to pay. They can call and say, hey, I, I see I have a credit on my account, you know, apply that for my next two months, I don't have to pay anything, so. But it's a small percentage from that, from the budget plan. From assistance, I will tell you, it has gone up. Um, it got up, went up over, you know, after COVID, it went up. Obviously, it went up a little bit, uh, in twenty twenty-one, we had that polar vortex here. Um, it has gone up, and part, part of it's, the reason why it's gone up is the federal government's giving more money to the, what they call the lie heat program, which is the, the money that funds energy assistance when customers go into UCAP or go to, you know, other agencies to say, hey, I can't pay my entire bill, you know, can I get some assistance? That has gone up in recent years, but it's been fairly low here. I will tell you, our customers are pretty reliable as far as, you know, paying their bills. We don't have any, anywhere near, um, the defaults. Um, I don't want to say problem, but the inability to pay, we don't have that as a large percentage in this town. So people do a good job of, you know, paying their utility bills and making good businesses in town, so. Um, other, other parts of my, other peers of mine, or that's a significant, um, issue for them.
I think that supports your statement that our rates are low or lower than other communities.
Correct.
If I could say honestly, I thought that number would be a lot healthier than that. It's actually a good sign of, of a healthy community when you have that kind of. And the other thing is, I know most people are aware of it because they talk about it. We can go on the budget program if we need to, if we've never had, but my wife has talked, you know, maybe it'd be easier if we did it this way. Uh, but as an option, so I've just, uh, you know, as we talk about increases in pricing, as we, we know that's going to happen. I just wanted to see what the impact would be kind of across the board from where we are now, if that's going to be a future issue.
Yeah, I don't know if it'll necessarily be any, any greater future issue. I think we're always cognizant of what the rate impacts are for people, and we take those into consideration. We know what people's usage is, and we know what, we know the income levels are in town, we know the job, we know the economy, we know those things. So we try to intentionally do things that are over periods of time so it doesn't impact customers. But we're very open to working with customers in this town, and I'll tell you, and most municipal utilities are, for the most part, very accommodating, they will work with customers, uh, to make whatever they can, you know, make. You know, so we'll do a lot of arrangements and different things, and because, you know, we're community owned, so we want to help you and support you, you know, support the customers, and as long as they pull the third of the bargain and, you know, and work with us, you know, we'll work with them, and so. So we do have a good relationship with people in town, our customers, our residents, our businesses, and, you know, hopefully that reflects, and hopefully you guys hear some of that, um, piece. But certainly being intentional about rates is a component of that, there's no question about that, so.
Jeremy, we hear, I think that if possible, Hutch could produce its own power to where it doesn't need to be a part of the grid or the market. Maybe touch on that because I, we hear it from time to time, when it just don't need a part of the, the grid or the market, but it's not that simple, is it?
No, it's not. I wish it was. There's reasons why we're, I think, how I describe utilities, Hutchinson, is I can describe us typically with people that don't really know our business. I say we operate like an investor-owned utility, but we're owned by the community, meaning we, we have our own generation, which a lot of municipal utilities don't, they don't have any generation, no ability to generate their own. They're also not a market participant, meaning they can't buy power off the market whenever they want. So they have typically a wholesale supplier that does all that for them. They manage generation fleet, they buy off the market, they sell off the market, and they provide that power to the municipal utility or the distribution utility. We do that exact same thing for ourselves, so we have our own generation, so we have, um, you know, like I said, we've got thirty megawatts downtown. We've got another about eighty up, you know, seven, another seventy-five, eighty up at the plant there, so we're running around a hundred megawatts. Um, and then we also get twenty-five megawatts from MRS. So our peak load in the summer is sixty megawatts. And then, of course, I'll tell you that sixty megawatts, we have to have a buffer regulatory, so we have to meet regular regulations. So we have about forty megawatts of excess generation that we can sell. We can sell physical energy, that forty, we can sell capacity. So we leverage those things because we do have local generation here. And at the same time, if we do get severed from the grid, we have the ability to get up and running a lot quicker than if we just relied on the transmission lines and the, the market to support us. So again, reliability is critical for us with the business model we're running now. The other piece that is good for us that we are a market participant is we will hedge our generation against the market. So for, if we, so we get twenty-five megawatts around the clock from Missouri River. And anything above that, we either have to buy it off the market or we will self-generate. And we will fill that gap with the least cost of power. So if it's cheaper for us to buy it all off the market, we'll buy it all off the market and we won't run. If it's cheaper for us to run, then we will run and we'll hedge against the market prices. So it's the best of both worlds, it, it creates complexity. It's a whole lot more complex to run a utility like that than just be someone that's buying all the power from a wholesaler. But it also provides you a lot of opportunities to leverage not only your assets, but the market to keep your retail rates down. So that's a big part of why our retail rates are below average when it comes to municipal utilities and peers is we really operate like an investor-owned utility, but we're owned. And on top of that, we have a natural gas transmission line that saves us transmission costs to supply gas up here to run our units. So you just don't see that around the country very rarely. When I talk to people, I go places, they can't believe that we do all this stuff in a community this size. So it's really an anomaly that you just don't see. Um, so it's a testament to the foresight of the board, the board that's here and staff, and so it's been, it's been a good mix.
I think that it's on purpose.
Yes.
I think you can't underestimate what Jeremy just talked about. Um, and it's really the, the reason why Hutch Utility is as solid as it is. We're different in probably three main ways. We're a good-sized municipality, top ten, fifteen in the state.
Yeah.
By revenues and great payer count. That makes us big enough to be viable in the long term. The electric generation that we have that Jeremy just talked about allows us to be an active participant in the market. And the profits that are generated by selling that in the market go to reduce our electrical rates, which is why Jeremy was able to say, our rate payers are paying lower rates than the peers. And the third thing is that natural gas pipeline, I don't think you can underestimate the power that that thing brings, the horsepower of that thing. We're only one of two in the state that has a natural gas pipeline. And that creative thinking of, of commissions decades before us is what has put the utility in the position that it's in today. It's in our very DNA to be that entrepreneurial type of utility. Um, but it's not typical from municipal. So if somebody, if you're standing in your driveway and you have to explain why Hutch Utility is as good for the community, I'd say it's those three things.
That's probably the reason that we have this meeting is for, you know, we've had three new council members since probably the last time we met, and we haven't really sat at a meeting like this to, to hear about Hutch Utility. There's a couple new board members on, on HUC as well. Um, and so it allows our council just to be a little bit more educated because, you know, we get it from time to time about, you know, why is the city doing this and that with, with electric and gas? Well, it's, first off, it's not the city, it's, you know, we'll talk with the HUC board. Secondly, this is what, where our authority is and, and is in at. And then thirdly, this is the information you should know about the benefit of, of HUC to, you know, to the community, so.
So technically, we have the best of all worlds right now.
Yes, it's Hutchinson, we always have the best of all. Yeah, I got a little fed on when Jeremy started talking about we're a little bit below average, and I realized it was about utility rates.
Should have prefaced that sooner. But we, but it's, so the trick moving forward is we do have the best of both worlds, and we try to maximize all those benefits. The trick now will be, how does this current business model fit in with what's coming, right? That's the challenge for this board, not if a council would, for the commissioners, does that, are we still in the wheelhouse with this stuff? Or have things, are things changed from a regulatory or a landscape that we have to rethink of some other avenues or some different ways of running our business model?
Well, at least it'll generate from coal.
Correct, that is true. So.
I think that's the thing that worries me the most, is the regulatory things that might be coming down the pipe. If I'm going to get concerned about something, that's going to be the thing I'm going to be concerned about. Because we have no choice than to.
Correct.
Do whatever, so.
Yeah. And of course, you hear the fodder of, hey, it's, it's first coal, and it's going to be natural gas, right? I mean, you hear, that's, those are conversations that I hear at, not only the state, but the federal level, I get some of them in hearings. It's first, we're going to get away, we're going to do away with the coal industry, and then natural gas is coming next. Even though it's significantly less emissions, and we, and we have a lot of current technology on our generation, so it's even less than the average natural gas generation, that's the fear, to your point, David, is it doesn't just stop with coal, it's what's the next thing? Of course, right now, there's been a huge pushback of, you can't get rid of all this dispatchable stuff because we don't have enough to displace and add in stuff that's reliable. So ten years from now, if a different technology comes out, is that something, is it the nuclear modular reactors? Is that going to be a component? What is that piece? But that is a fear, not only for the industry, but also for consumers. You get a lot of advocacy about, hey, if I got to pay a little bit more to keep my lights on, where you're not going to get into this thing where, hey, every Monday at two o'clock, we're cycling up everyone for a half hour, because that's been a, talk about West is going to more of a social understanding that, hey, we're going to start cycling people off normally. Like everyone can do without power for an hour to keep loads down in the key. Having to incur increased cost for generation. So you're starting to hear some out on the West Coast already about changing social patterns and culture and making it acceptable that it's okay to have your power off from time to time, that people shouldn't be expected to have power of your own.
What are you talking about, thermostats now that are smart, thermostats that if no one's in the house, send a signal to, say, basically, turn us off? And so we're seeing that type, and that's what I was talking about earlier, all these new technologies that are coming through. Not only do we have to worry about it as a homeowner, they also worry the utility.
Right.
And another question to ask is, why have we never delved into geothermal as much as, especially in our residential?
I don't know if we've ever, I mean, from a commercial application, I don't know that we've ever looked at since I've been here. I know residential, I mean, just as a resident here, I.
And maybe more into the rebate programs and things like that, and I think we have that conversation.
Correct.
Is with the retention ponds and the opportunities we have for geothermal, why aren't we pursuing that direction? Especially with the equipment being heavily subsidized by tax money. Just a, a standard.
Yeah, that's a good question, good one, I talked about.
So Mayor Collins, like I said, this is kind of an opportunity, if you have any additional questions or comments or feedback for the utilities board?
I don't have any questions.
If you have any questions for the council.
One question. Here about a week or so ago, I saw a commercial on TV, and it really highlighted how badly we need oil and natural gas. And it's about, the story is a pregnant lady comes into, she's supposed to deliver her baby, and she walks into a room like this, there, and there's nothing in the room. So typically, she's upset, well, how am I going to deliver a baby in a room that looks like this? Guy comes out and says, not to worry, I just want to show you what we wouldn't have if we don't have oil and natural gas. So they opens up the door and they walk in, and now they got all their chairs and tables and upholstery, you know, and whatever they got in there, like you'd walk into here, and I thought, at that time, I said, I want, I thought to myself, I wonder how many times they're actually going to run this commercial? I haven't seen it since. And so it was an eye-opener, when you stop and think about it, all the things that are manufactured with oil and natural gas. He said, we wouldn't have syringes. Well, how would you give a shot? Except for metal, you know, that type of thing. But I said, it really was a good common sense commercial to make people realize if we don't have oil and gas or natural gas, that there's a lot of things we wouldn't have in this, in this, in our world. So one of the things that we use, and that's, like I said, it's from my personal, it made one heck of a lot of common sense that there are certain things that people I don't believe are looking at for consumer consumption as to what they're trying to mandate to eliminate some of that stuff, so it's just a, it's just a commentary of all that, so. If no one else saw it, I'm sorry you didn't see it.
I read a stat one time, but just a, several thousand products come out of oil, just to break down into different things. Some things I had never even realized, Tylenol is one of them, there's a component of oil that is in Tylenol. So just to your point, there's just a lot of those things. Of course, we talked to people on the natural gas, and they said, well, that's not going anywhere, natural gas, the United States has an abundance of it for a century, you know, so the, the big concern there is countries around the globe are looking to develop, right? So eighty percent of the population only consumes twenty percent of the energy, whereas twenty percent of the population consumes eighty, the United States, Europe, parts of Asia, and all these other countries around the globe want to expand, they want to have half the standard of living that the United States has and that Europe has, and in order to get there, the common theme is in order to industrialize and revolutionize and build the cost or standard of living, you have to have cheap energy. So the people around the globe put cheap energy over carbon-free when they're building out, when they're industrializing. So some of the comments are, it's not going anywhere because it's a reliable source, it's cheap, we have an abundance. The question is, do you ship a lot of that overseas? You play more global market now, which has changed in the natural gas industry. It used to be just domestic, it's a, it's a global industry now. So a lot of it is going overseas, so we're competing with Europe and competing with Asia to keep our own supply here. And so that obviously drives up pricing as well too. But there isn't going to be a lack of need for natural gas as countries around the globe, you know, industrialize. But the question is, what do we do here in the United States relative to other countries?
Anything else?
I guess as a councilperson, I appreciate your time.
I like it.
It's very interesting.
Certainly feel free to call me anytime, glad you guys could get together.
Yeah, only other thing, Jeremy, and I, we threw this around a few times, uh, I asked about maybe a tour of the plants for the council.
Yeah, Jeremy, I can work on that, I know you guys have some work to do on it, but I think it'd be good just for you guys to to see some of that technology, if there's folks who are interested in seeing that.
Yeah, I know, I've talked about trying to get something with the commission too here, so I want to see the two. Find a good time on the plant, so I can take them through, tower, get some schedule on.
It's good to go in there when they're running, so.
I was in there with a rental student the other day, and he wasn't. No, yeah, I will definitely get some times and some dates and times sent out, I think you guys would think it would be interesting for you guys to see.
I know that everybody's been by it a thousand times, but I was fortunate enough to get to go in every once in a while. So it'd be interesting for them to see. Time frame for your, for the plant, second plant? You said you were going to ship that out to get it fixed.
We got it scheduled for, I think, late August right now-ish timeframe. You know what, certainly we don't want to pull it out during the peak seasons that's coming up now. We were originally scheduled to have it out here this spring. But of course, as you can imagine, anyone that has generating units like ours, they want to get the maintenance done in the spring before the summer runs. So it just got to be, hey, we can't get this thing down there till the summer. Well, we don't want to take it out in the summertime because we may need to use it not only for locally, but just for the grid reliability in the region. And the market calls on our generation to keep load control and voltage control up. So we said, well, we're going to have to wait till late summer. So depending on the weather, if we can get it out sooner, mid-August, if it doesn't look like it's going to stay hot or we're not going to have a lot of load, we'll try to call a little bit earlier. If not, probably look at the end of August.
Don't say, we'll wait till it's snowing.
No. But it's, it'll probably be out four months or five months. So we may hit, we may hit the winter where that thing is still, depending on what they find and some of the things that they need to fix.
You'd be surprised, I mean, you don't think that anybody sees that there. But if you start working on it, everybody will say, what's going on, what happened?
Oh, yeah. And you'll start seeing some stuff, like I said, down at the downtown plant, they'll be pulling out stuff. There may be stuff staged out back. That's, so if you hear that or people inquire about, you know, what's going on at the downtown plant, you know, we're refurbishing the cooling tower, but then we're going to be pulling out some of the old units in there. Couple vintage ones from the late sixties and then unit eight, that's a big one that comes off the roof. So if people inquire, they ask you, you can let them know that we're pulling out the old stuff. So all we'll have left are the new units now.
Mary, you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you guys for taking your time.
Motion to adjourn. Motion by Chad, second type ten to adjourn. Any other questions? Sure, discussion. Home and city say. Full singing. Motion carries.
Saying for the utilities commission, I've got a motion to adjourn.